She has got one more week of administration and then she is off for the summer.
Nice.
I was gonna copy, I forgot to copy some over here.
Yeah.
There you go.
This is what happens when Tristan's out, we uh.
Exactly.
We suffer.
He's on vacation this week.
We're a little lost.
Tristan is on PTO and we wish her the best.
Alright, seven there.
Alright, it is seven o'clock. We have a seven o'clock meeting, so the meeting is gonna commence. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome everybody to today's City of Dayton Regular City Council Meeting, which on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, at seven o'clock. Uh, since Tristan's not here, I'll do it. Uh, roll call, please. Uh, Ms. Lovins.
Yeah.
Mr. Judd.
President.
Ms. Kelly.
Yeah.
Mr. Horton.
Here.
Mr. Neary.
Here.
Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Ms. Neiman. The city minister, the city administrator, Fawcett.
Here.
City Attorney, Evanson.
Here.
Alright, we have a full house, I appreciate that as always. Next up, we're gonna rise for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much for your attention. Uh, next on the mayor's report, we just gave a mayor's report, uh, mere two weeks ago, but how can we not mention, uh, yesterday's parade? It was the ninety-sixth Annual Dayton, Kentucky, uh, in conjunction with Bellevue, Kentucky, uh, parade. Great turnout, great organization, it was a, it was, it was a wonderful day, so if you guys volunteered in it, I appreciate you. If you guys showed up, I appreciate you as well, just to see the parade. Uh, yeah, I can't wait for ninety-seven.
And special commendation to Jared for organizing it.
Yeah, Jared, it was Jared's first year on organizing it and that was, uh, and he, uh, he rocked it, it was great. So years past was by the VFW, but this year was Jared, so good job, sir.
Definitely recommend you take it over again next year.
Testing sound.
If you can't, we were just thanking you Jared for your.
How about you taking over the Memorial Day parade going forward?
So that is all I have in my report. Uh, next up, we have, uh, a few items on the agenda this evening. A couple of second readings in order. So if anybody'd like to address city council and administration on those agenda items, you're welcome to do so. Oh, you have two folks in the crowd, I don't know if you can see that at home, but, uh, they're not rising, so I'll go ahead and move along. Again, with Tristan out, I guess I'll read the whole darn thing. Uh, first ordinance on the, uh, agenda tonight is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one. This is an ordinance adopting the City of Dayton, Kentucky's annual budget for the fiscal year running from July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, and estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the city to the full extent authorized by KRS eight-two dot zero-eight-two and interpretive case law. Now, this is a second reading. Do I have a motion to accept a second reading?
So mayor, I think I, I didn't get a chance to talk with you, I talked to a couple of council members, I think they want to, uh, discuss it tonight, but not vote on it until the first, uh, meeting in June.
Fine.
But they can disagree with me if I'm incorrect, but that's kind of what I felt was.
So we make the motion to table it until the next meeting, but that opens it up for discussion also.
Correct.
Alright, so if that's the discussion, should we have a motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
Remember, Neary made the motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by our member Neiman. So it's up for discussion.
I apologize, because I've been out of town. Uh, I haven't had the time to go into detail on the budget until today. And I've got some questions that I need to address with the administration, obviously not publicly. I don't want to embarrass myself by dumb questions, but.
Oh, please do.
There are no dumb questions.
It's okay.
But, uh, I'll, I'll direct my questions via email to administration, uh, so that hopefully in the next fourteen days, two weeks from now, we'll be able to have all those answered and, uh, take the vote on it then. I'll take the hit.
Now Jared is, he is the architect of the budget and, uh, he probably does more better than I do, I review it, but he does all the work. So if you have questions specifically, you probably want to direct him either meet with him in person or, or by email and he can hopefully answer your question.
So I guess question to council, does anybody else need any additional time as well?
I do.
Okay. I, I have a couple of questions that didn't quite get answered yet either, so I'll address those offline as well, um, to wrap up. But I will say, uh, in general, I was very excited about how this budget came together. The draft budget does a really good job of tying in with our priorities that we had set during the strategic planning session. Uh, kudos to Jared and the team for, for doing a great job on putting all that together. Um, and Jared is, is great at answering questions, because we just did some right now, so don't be afraid to ask them. I encourage everybody to take a look deep, deep into the budget and ask all those questions, um, so we can get a, a good vote next, next time around, or amend if necessary.
I have a comment. So, um, I'm not challenging you guys or anything, but why wouldn't you ask them now? So, because maybe, you know, we, it would cut down on the redundancy if we keep asking the same questions, but also you might have an interesting question that I never thought of, or like, why do we do that? Why do you do that?
I have two final questions left, but you said you need more time, so we might as well take it offline and, and ask the right questions, so.
Wait, what? No, I mean, just, just, why wouldn't you ask them while we're here, because we have this time, and then we could all sort of learn something?
Because we can get so deep into the weeds, honestly, we could be here till ten-thirty. I've got all.
That's why you, you have enough to.
Yeah, I just got back and with the parade and everything, and I just, I spent about three or four hours on it today, putting it in my format that I can compare. And I, I've just found in years past, it's much more efficient to, for me to ask administration, and administration has been a really good judge of if we need to explain this publicly, we can send it out to all of council, or discuss it in the meeting.
Yeah, you got, you can discuss.
I'd rather be the judge.
But you can discuss it in the next meeting. I mean, it's, so before you vote, you will have the same opportunity to ask questions in public and get those answered. So, I mean, it's not like we're not saying you can't do it, just, just move, you'll just be doing it in the next meeting.
Yeah, because this is council's most important task, you know, and I, I take it very seriously, so I need more time. Uh, if there are questions that I think everybody needs, I can't presume that my questions are the same as everyone else's.
It doesn't.
Different priorities, different knowledge levels, et cetera.
Yeah, that's why I thought it, as we go along and have to do this every year, the questions themselves are interesting. You have a lot of experience, I would be interested to see what you didn't understand, what you thought of. I wouldn't have thought, same, he's new.
Well, I think if, if I was.
What are these questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Um, if I was to have a question and I send it to administration, and someone else was to send the same question to administration, uh, I have faith that they would say, okay, this is not just Joe. This is a general misunderstanding, I need to put something out to explain it.
Okay.
I, I mean, I can ask a couple of example questions and see.
Go ahead.
If it's right up your, so.
Yeah.
Um, Jared, are you ready to field any questions if necessary?
Just, uh, just to appease Beth here, I'll just ask a couple of my questions. So one of them is.
To educate Beth.
To educate Beth, I will ask a couple of questions. So on the very last page of the line item budget, there's a, a listing for admin capital outlay. Can you please elaborate on that?
Admin capital outlay has quite a number of grant match in it, so it's a fairly large number if I remember correctly. So all of that matching for all those grants is essentially.
Okay, so in this current year budget, uh, yeah, it's over a million dollars, uh, but we're only budgeting a hundred and ten thousand for next year? Yeah, okay. And then the last question that I have is actually related to the, to the franchise fee related to, um, the, the trash pickup?
Yes.
So the, the trash item that we're gonna be talking about later, we charge a franchise fee in order to cover the cost of the administration of that trash pickup, right?
Billing and administering the contract, yes.
What, what is the actual amount of that, that we're keeping for the city? Okay.
It's the same amount we do now, we've actually reduced the rate because the price of the, um, service has gone up. So we reduced it from twenty percent to around ten percent now.
Yeah, and, um, that goes into the general fund for generals.
Yeah, and I saw in the budget, it's about the same, you're trying to keep that, that dollar amount about the same? Okay. So those are my two questions, one of them is you have to get back to me on.
Endifying, I think it's interesting. I also think that if we keep having these same questions and we're hitting him, why does he have to answer six emails? Like, why, why can't?
I mean, if you were to ask my preference, I would prefer it to be through an email.
Really?
He asked me a very specific question. I don't have my, I mean, I don't.
Oh, okay.
So if you, if you're, you're asking a very abstract, large question, like, why are we doing a certain project? That makes sense, but if you're bidding down to a certain line, and why is this number higher or lower? That would be better.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
I'll just make one more comment, because, because Joe and I chatted about this a little bit as well, is, because a lot of the budget items for this time round are, um, add to staff for some capital expenditures, right? So we're adding, um, to police, so we're adding to fire, or sorry, police is vehicles, fire, we're adding us, uh, two staff members, and, um.
Public Works.
Public Works is, is adding one as well.
Right.
Um, if you take a look at the overtime figures, the, the hope is, I think, that those would go down specifically on the fire side.
That's where the problem is.
By adding these additional staff. So I know that was a question I had, and, and Joe and I talked through that a little bit, um, since he was a representative on the fire board, so, um, something that somebody else might have questions about as well, is why do we need these add to staff? Well, the proof is that we're, we're getting the hours, we need to give them to, to the right people, so we're not overworking people.
Joe can tell you that there, uh, is, um, fire department has, they have regular overtime, what's it called? Two different types of overtime, scheduled overtime, and then occasionally, when they don't have enough people, they have other overtime. So it's built into their schedule because firefighters work those crazy hours. So, yeah, that's, the whole idea is that we get rid of the overtime and hopefully the new employees, and that reduces the budget a little bit.
Yeah, we tried going with, um, normally they're staffed with at least five on duty, and you've got three shifts, so that's fifteen personnel. And because of the problems every department's having with keeping staff, um, with retirements and people bouncing from here to there, uh, the chief wanted to try it with four on each shift. And the problem we, and we did that for a year, the problem was when someone needed time off or took time off, somebody else obviously had to cover it, you couldn't, they were, even when we were staffing at five, there were occasions where we only had four on duty, but you can't go to three. You gotta have two on the ambulance squad and at least two on the, on the fire truck. So we tried it with four, it racked up the overtime numbers too much, so that's why they're requesting to add personnel to go back to five per shift. Even though it's additional headcount, in the long run, it should lessen the amount of payroll, because you won't have the time and a half.
And the reality is that we're the last year, so it was hard for us to find anybody, because we weren't paying as much as other places. We've helped, we've raised that amount the last couple of years, be more competitive, and we have a really good work environment, but we lose a lot of times to the Covingtons and the Cincinnatis and Newport, because they pay much more money.
And with, with Public Works, to your point on that, Public Works has been notoriously oversta, understaffed for years. And we keep asking them to, to do more and more, and they, they're also, uh, spending a lot of overtime. I mean, look at how many of them worked on Monday, and they still have a ton of grass to cut all, all this week. So, um, we're finally getting Public Works, I think, up to the level that we need.
So, um, that's interesting. So if I just had read that, the budget, I wouldn't have realized that layer. You know, so I just think it's interesting to talk about things I didn't, I would have just assumed, I don't know, I guess, you know, but.
Well, yeah, to, to that, to that point as well, uh, just to give you another example of a question I asked was, um, there's a whole listing of streets that we want to get caught up on, on fixing. Um, and so I asked, asked Jared and I said, hey, is there anything else, because we're, we're putting aside two hundred thousand dollars to fix that, the road that's falling off a cliff? Um, could we deploy those funds and get any more, any more roads done this year versus putting aside funds for next year? Right? And he said, no, this pretty much gets us all caught up on, on streets that need fixed. Um, so those are the kind of questions that I'm asking, and, and then I'm, I also asked, and it's something we might want to consider down the line, is we have all these alleyways that have not had any work done to them at all, uh, that we might want to consider down the line as well, so.
A little bit of a caveat, though, I just, uh, some of the streets we couldn't fix this year, because water district's coming in.
Right.
Eighth Street and Fifth Street, so there are more streets that need to be fixed. We have a priority list of all the streets that need to be fixed, and we're moving down that list. There may be more after these, don't, these aren't the last streets.
Well, we're done.
To be fixed, just so you're aware. So we have more, but yeah, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, all that can be done now without other, other folks involved.
Right.
And so we, we've had a motion to a table, a second to table, this is being tabled. Do we have any other questions or comments that, uh, we want to air out tonight? Alright, so you have, uh, two weeks until the next time we, we approach this subject, and you're, feel free to ask city administration about any questions you might have.
Do we need a, a vote on the tabling?
I think you do.
Alright, so we have a motion to table on second, uh, Ms. Lovins.
Aye.
Mr. Judd.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Neiman.
Aye.
Mr. Neary.
Aye.
Mr. Horton.
Aye.
So I hear, you, you were the motion, who was the second?
I made the motion, I believe, Aaron.
Aaron made the second, okay, thank you.
Who seconded?
Beth.
Oh, Beth seconded, okay.
I'm sorry.
Second, thank you. You were quiet there, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
It's your camouflage scarf, I didn't see you there.
Okay, thank you.
So that is table till next meeting. Next up on the dock for our second reading is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two. Now, this is an ordinance amending chapter nine-five of the City of Dayton, Kentucky Code of Ordances to add a new section prohibiting the use of motorized vehicles in sergeant parks other than in the parking areas of the park, including a criminal penalty, penalty for failure to comply with this code section. Again, that's a second reading. Do I have a motion to accept second reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two?
Oh, I have a question.
Well, you have to, please wait on that.
Okay.
Thanks. Uh, do I have a motion to accept second reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two?
I'll make that motion.
Remember, Neiman's made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Remember, Kelly, ladies first always, Mr. Neary, we know that. Uh, alright, would anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
You have a question?
What brought this on? Or are they?
What's that, what brought it up?
Yeah, what are they driving around up there?
So we had neighbors complaining of, uh, well, dirt bikes and other vehicles, but also it's dangerous. People are on regular bikes, they're walking, and they should be riding motorcycles and ATV vehicle, vehicles there, so, um, that's why we did it.
What would the penalty be if someone were caught doing something?
Thirty lashings, very similar.
It's a, it's a.
With no financial penalty?
Nah, nah, the lashings, you don't care anymore.
It's a misdemeanor, which is, um, six months in jail and, or five hundred dollars fine or both, is it?
Is it, I think we're, it's an A, so it'd be five hundred dollar max, uh, up to a year in jail.
Of the year in jail, and plus, one, they probably will get them more than anything, we will impound the vehicle.
Correct, your dirt bike comes with us.
There we go.
And we have a motion to accept a second, do we have any other questions, comments, concerns?
Sorry.
You have a question?
Was that real? Wait, wait, so someone's like, oh, you're out with.
No, the lashings are just.
No, not that, they're, where you run with a dirt bike, they could go for, to, in jail?
They could go to jail for a year, they, they would never do that, they probably would be fined. Generally, the judges are, first, first offense, they're not going, probably put you in jail for a bit like that.
Beth, they usually put probated time over their head, so like, seven days to serve, or, no, I don't think I, in sixteen, fifteen years, have ever given someone a year in jail on a misdemeanor. Um, I guess if you did it so many times, it'd be so offensive, but usually it's just probated time, which means if you get caught again, we're really going to take you to jail this time.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, and I thank you for, uh, taking action on this, because I can't catch the mini bikes going through sergeant.
You tried?
I tried.
Chasing?
I lost, I, I used to be able to run that fast.
No, you didn't. Come on, man.
We do have new cameras, or cameras in the new system, and I need to get you hooked into that, so I think we'll be able to identify people that are down there doing this illegally, so that will help.
Oh, cool.
Alright, we've had a motion to accept and a second. Do you have any other questions? Comments, concerns? Alright, so the motion was made by Ms. Neiman, and Ms. Kelly made the second, so I'm gonna do a roll call. Ms. Lovins?
Aye.
Mr. Judd?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Horton?
Aye.
Mr. Neary?
Aye.
Ms. Neiman?
Aye.
Now, the ayes have it a hundred percent. Moving right along to the, the main ticket item, I believe, on tonight's agenda. So we will now vote on Order Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-one Romeo. And that is an order resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rumkey of Kentucky Incorporated for collection and removal of solid waste and recycling materials within the city at a rate of two hundred and seventy dollars a year per each residential mixed-use customer payable from the city's general fund, which will be reimbursed by annual waste fees paid up to the city by property owners receiving the service. Do I have a motion to accept Order Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one-one Romeo?
Could you clarify that amount, mayor?
Two, so, two hundred and seventy dollars a year per each residential mixed-use customer.
Does that include the toter and recycling?
Yes, sir, that includes the toter and the recycling toter.
Do you think it's two ninety?
That's the number that's in front of my sheet. Oh, you may, most certainly.
This is Robin, Robin Glaber.
Robin, if you wouldn't mind approaching the podium and, uh, oh, come on, it's your friend.
Includes the twelve dollars for the dumpsters too.
The two hundred and seventy dollars includes the twelve roll-offs, twelve portable restrooms, and the fifty event boxes. That's what makes it two hundred and seventy, because it added a dollar.
Dollar a month.
But also the toters and recyclers.
And it includes one trash and one recycle, yes.
And shred day?
What?
Shred day in that?
No, no shred day.
No shred.
Yeah, we don't have.
They don't, they don't do that.
Okay.
So it's two fifty-eight plus twelve, right?
Yes.
Same day of the week, every week, both.
Yes, it will, it will get to that, yes, yes.
What's your, what's your question, Joe?
I had.
His numbers aren't right.
I had a much higher number, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it here.
Pushing three hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two seventy is pushing three hundred.
I mean, I don't, wanted to go higher, but I.
For Joe questioning you, go ahead and hit us with an extra five bucks and say, because of Joe Neary.
I have.
I'm not going to do that.
Jay, your email from May fifteenth with Rumkey's solid waste removal document on there. And it shows solid waste removal with toter and recycling with toter for two ninety-five eighty.
That, that was, I think, an earlier one that was a mistake, so this number is correct, that's what the contract will say, the lower number.
I thought we got an email saying that that was incorrect.
I sent you a, a document.
Yeah, we got a new email.
Let me find that, Joe.
I'm looking on the chain here. Da-da-da-da. I'm sorry, Robin, it's been a lot of back and forth, but I, I thank you for your patience with both councils, answering all the questions and emails.
So was the two ninety-eight what, that you were looking at, does that include the franchise fee that you all?
Well, it was.
Include?
I was presuming that, yeah, um. So the.
Either way, if you're saying it's a verbal contract, so we gotta, gotta honor it.
No.
Yeah. So mayor, you're, you were saying two seven zero point?
Two seven zero.
Twenty seven, two hundred and seventy dollars even.
Even.
Per residence?
That's what's on my paper, sir.
And it's all fee, all the franchise fee and everything included?
No. That does not include the franchise fee.
Gotcha, okay.
That makes sense.
Gotcha, so this is just.
So what is the total whole enchilada number?
Yeah, that's the number.
I'm looking at the whole enchilada number.
There you are.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, you're correct then.
What is the whole enchilada number then?
I'll leave it to Mr. Fawcett, so I don't misquote anybody.
What's that?
The to, the total per residence with the franchise fee?
Um, I gotta find, it's, it's ten percent, whatever, so it's two seventy, add twenty-seven dollars onto that.
Two seventy, seventy-nine.
Two ninety-seven.
Two ninety-seven.
I, I had two ninety-five, right?
Alright, so two ninety-six?
Two ninety-seven is.
Two ninety-seven.
Two seventy plus twenty-seven is ninety-seven.
And then the Rumkey added services, which is twelve dollars.
That's, that's included, that's included, that's included the full amount, so that's the total amount with the franchise and their added services, two ninety-seven.
Gotcha, thank you.
Jeff, can I read that again with the proper number?
Well.
Well, no, what you're reading is the contract between the city and Rumkey that we have to approve. The additional franchise fee and, um, the added cost, that's the city.
Right.
You, in the body of the ordinance, it talks about the franchise fee, the heading you just read just talks about what Rumkey's charging us.
Understood.
Okay.
That's what threw me off.
Sure.
Okay, so to be clear, you were looking for a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll move.
The motion's been made by member Judd, which opens up for a second motion, or, uh, acceptance, do I have a second?
I will second.
Ms. Lovins? Opens up for discussion. We have any discussion regarding two zero two-five dash one-one Romeo?
I'm curious about what happened at Bellevue tonight at six o'clock meeting, and do we have to have the same plan with Bellevue since we're doing this together?
Bellevue voted to go with a trash cart and a recycling cart. They went with option one.
Wow.
So the whole taco.
Six o'clock today.
Great, okay, yeah.
So it's the same thing, we're basically doing the same thing.
Same thing, if you vote that, that way tonight, it's the same thing, it'll be one contract.
Okay.
So my question is, how are we gonna mitigate, um, to the residents, how we're gonna pick up the trash bins that they already have? How are we gonna, how are we gonna roll that out, and if you guys are gonna help us with that?
You, you go ahead.
Well, Republic has made it known that they are not picking up any carts in the City of Dayton or the City of Bellevue. So whatever carts are here that belong to them, they're leaving them here. They are leaving them.
At no charge, and then like the people.
No charge, they're leaving them for the resident to do whatever with. It's the resident's possession, effective July one.
And some of their older carts, they probably feel like that they're appreciated at this point.
Pretty bad carts out here. Now, if you vote to go with one trash and one recycle, we're obviously going to deliver that to each resident, so at that time, I mean, I would think that the resident would want to use the cart that they're paying for. If they want to get rid of the other one, they just set it out beside ours and put a note on it saying, throw it away, and we'll dispose of it.
And if they would like to keep it, you guys would still collect the trash from the Republic?
If it was setting out there, yeah.
Okay, because that's the question I've been getting, that I've been asking residents, and they're like, what are we gonna do with our bins that we already have now from Republic, um, we already, that's one question, or one question, and the other one is, they already pay a weekly, or monthly fee to Republic that, to retain the cans, that anything was to happen to them, and they want to make sure that they have that same agreement with Rumkey, and these are just general questions that they're asking that.
Sure.
Like, we would like to, I mean, as a councilman, I like to be transparent, to tell the residents, because this is gonna be something that's gonna, you know, like, this is a small town, something, any change from my being here kinda shakes things up, and there's a, a select few people, probably twenty-five percent, is gonna take this and run with it, and if we can have a, you know, a united force together, how we can, you know, a, approach this to where we're like, oh, this is no big deal, this is a great thing, this is gonna help our future, it's gonna help our kids. I mean, if we can, if Rumkey and us could all work together, I, I would appreciate that personally.
Right.
It's a great point, and because, we didn't learn today, uh, learn until today that Republic was not gonna come pick up their cans, we thought they were. So you could either keep your can if you want, some people want to put them in their basement, if it's decent shape, or you can put it up for Rumkey to take away, you just need to put a sign on it saying, you know, this, this, what do you?
Throw it away.
Throw this, throw this away. And so there's gonna be a, um, we got a. Throw this, throw this away. And so there's going to be a, um, we got a month before this contract starts. We need to get it signed based on this vote. And we're going to do a PR and kind of marketing approach. We're going to get on social, social media and other ways to explain what's going on here with these carts and when the new service is going to take over.
Right.
Also talk about, we got currently, what's that? Go ahead.
What about the, the recycling cans that are city of Dayton?
That, those are, those are Republics.
Oh, those are Republics? Okay.
Those are Republics. They just branded them with our names on them.
Oh.
But they're, they're, they're really interesting. They said they don't want them. So if you want to keep them, you can.
So you said you could put six out? Like if you, if you decluttered your entire basement, your entire garage and you have, you have the old cans, you have your current cans, you can have six cans?
Yeah, I would, um, it would be recommended that you'd give us a heads up.
Okay.
To know, you know, if you have that many additional carts out for service for that particular week.
Okay. Does that mean four regulars and two, like, anything, any configuration? Two, two recyclings and four regulars, whatever, it's six total? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you have a particularly large pickup, you're supposed to call them, let them know.
Yeah, large, large items like mattresses, you know, things of couches, things of that nature.
Just the cans. I was thinking, how many can you line up?
Yeah.
So Robin, let's talk a little bit about the fact that we have three days of garbage and we want to get down to one day. We, we talked, we might need a three-month period to kind of get there because people are used to getting their garbage out on those three days. So we want to take three months. Is that still the plan?
Yes. We want to...
We can talk about that a little bit.
We want to make this transition as painless as possible for all of the residents. And so we're going to leave the service as is for 90 days. So whatever their service day is right now, we're going to leave that the same for 90 days. And then if a switch, if a change is to be made after those 90 days, which I think there is to going to one day a week, we will have enough time to get that literature out to each resident so they know and are aware, hey, this is going to change.
I think that's a good idea.
As it is right now, we have a month to get all that stuff together and get it out to everybody. And we want to make sure that everybody knows what's, I'm sure there's been some talk in the town about it. I, I don't know. I can, I can imagine.
Neither do you have.
But we want to make sure that everybody receives the postcard and all information that they need before any changes are made.
So the new days are in August?
It'll be September. You'll go July, August, September, and then October 1, we'll go to the, hopefully the one-day collection of those cities.
Yeah. They will receive their carts before those 90 days. I'm almost positive they will. They'll receive their Rumkey carts, but service day changes will not occur until after that 90-day mark. Can the city of Dayton send out, you know how we do our taxes? Can we send out a postcard to every resident so they can say that, hey?
We can. I think...
We mailed it to everyone in the city?
We can, but I think an easier and cheaper route would be to post something on their garbage cans when they pick them up, take them back in.
We can have our communications department provide a statement or two to put out on your social media pages so people get this information quickly that way. But as far as postcards and, and things to be mailed to them, you know, that...
And we could do it. I mean, it would be expensive to send it to every resident by mail. But I think the cheaper route would be for us to maybe put something on the garbage cans.
Well, you know, everyone pays attention to social media.
Right.
Whatever avenue it is that you guys use, there's people on it and they see it. So, and it wouldn't take but one person to see it and then they're sharing it.
Right.
To whoever else.
We'll definitely do that, for sure.
It goes viral really quickly.
And we have three different social media channels besides the cities in the Dayton.
Yes, yes.
I'm sure we'll get it out on that as well.
So we can, I can work with our PR team to put something together quickly for you.
Right.
So residents know, starting July 1, it will be us.
Right.
Instead of Republic.
I worry about those that don't have social media, older folks, maybe, you know, people that can't afford internet service, whatever. But everybody's got a phone pretty much, but...
If we had...
I think we put them on the garbage cans. Can we put like a sticker on the garbage cans, let them know?
I don't know if we...
That'd be just as exp, a sticker is just as expensive.
It would just, it would be just as expensive, I would think, if not more.
Is it? Okay, maybe you're right.
Um...
I mean, it's 40, 50 cents a stamp, so that adds up.
Mass population?
In your database, do you have a lot of email addresses to residents?
Uh, we have some.
I've mailed those cards to every resident before. We get a flat rate on those, which is much cheaper than a stamp.
Oh, it is, okay.
To mail them to every resident, it costs us about $1,000. I think that would be well spent.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay. That makes sense.
And that way it covers everybody.
Right.
Social media, I don't know.
Right. I agree. That makes sense.
There's also email, there's also email blasts that we've done before, but it's only as good as however many emails you have.
Sure.
Of your residents.
And we have a newsletter, an email newsletter. We'll make sure it's in that as well. So we have a couple of different avenues that we can, we can go.
We could also ask the, you know, our local churches to put it in their bulletins, too.
That's a good point. That's a great idea.
Final Fridays and the South Bank Shuttle Bulletin Board. I mean, we have plenty.
Send someone out. Each, each council member gets a megaphone and they go to different areas of the city and just say it, just blast it.
I'm so glad I'm on a council. That's great.
I would, I will help. I would love to do that.
I just give them the mayor's phone number.
We'll do an interpretive dance.
We will make this fun.
And the choice that we're making to provide both trash and recycling with the toters, is that comparable to other cities as well? Are they also all making similar decisions? Or are we just better than them or what?
Just about every city that we, well, every city that we service in Northern Kentucky offers one trash and one recycle in their rate. Everyone.
Including toters?
Yes.
Okay.
We're the last.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Fine hour, fine hour.
And you do find that there may be a resident that may not recycle right now because they don't want to pay for it. But if they have it, it's offered to them. They might, well, we have the cart, we might as well start using it. And they may end up recycling more than throwing away trash. It's...
And if you were to do just solid waste with a cart and not, and, and someone wanted, and they weren't doing recycling with a toter, it would be more expensive to contract with you independently.
Absolutely.
To get that toter for recycling than it was doing what we're doing today.
It's cheaper just to go all in and provide one trash, one recycle to each resident.
Yeah, for the people, one of the points I made to, uh, some people was if you are recycling already and you want to continue recycling, it's, and we didn't include that, what was it, $84 a year, $7 a month?
For subscription, yes.
Which would discourage people from recycling. And plus you have the complication of an additional bill directly from Rumkey. It just makes it a lot messier that way. And those, those are the type of people that are moving into our communities. I've talked to people that have moved in here and they're, they're surprised, they're almost disappointed that we don't have recycling included. Because everywhere you go, everybody else does. As Robin said, everywhere else in Northern Kentucky has recycling. I tried signing up for recycling multiple times with our, I'll call them our previous vendor, and never got responses or never got follow-through. So I think having it for everybody in town makes a lot of sense. And it's not mandatory, correct? I mean, if, if I put recycling materials in my trash tote, it's not like I'm going to get arrested or anything. So for people who don't want to, to recycle, as you said, you know, you're paying for it anyway, you might as well start on it. And we started separating our stuff out a couple of months ago and I've cut my trash volume down by about a third. Just taking the recycling stuff out of it. So it makes a lot of sense. And I know, you know, it's a 10-year commit, five-year commitment on this contract, correct? This contract runs for five years and can be extended out to 10.
The initial term is five years and then there's a five-year renewal period if you choose to do so.
We're making a 10-year commitment here. 10 years ago, when we approved the current contract, which is expiring, they were the lowest bidder. We had multiple bids on it and they were the lowest bidder. And we kind of got what we paid for there. And even though this seems like a premium service, um, I think it's, I personally feel it's a direction I know I want to go as a citizen. I was at the Bellevue council meeting earlier. There, I mean, at first I was like, let's go the cheapest. But then when you really start talking to people over the past two weeks, it surprised me, the comments that I got from people. I only had one or two people that said they didn't want recycling and it was all age groups that wanted recycling. I thought people my age and older were kind of aloof about it, but they were great with it. I mean, this, this bottle's going to be here 100 years from now. I'm not. But if it gets into recycling, it, it eliminates that in the waste stream. So I would like for my fellow council members to approve this unanimously to show that our city is a progressive city that's really looking to the future. I don't know if anybody has any dissension on that, but I'd love to see a unanimous vote as a message.
I just had one more question about the recycling. Um, does Rumkey have any literature or education that we can team up with you guys? Like you're going to team up with us on a PR as far as the launch? Can we do some kind of recycling educational piece that we can, you know, at our final Fridays, like we can make announcements? Or like something that we can accompany along with and we can help drive the recycling push? And like maybe be on the forefront of like a, maybe a contest or something? I don't know if you guys have anything in place that we could participate in making recycling popular?
We have flyers that we can send out to you that can be made copies of and can be sent to everybody. That is, it's the most recent flyer that has all the acceptable items that we have for curbside recycling. Those, there's a sticker on each cart that's going to have that same thing on the lid as well. We do have some individuals in our PR department that are more than happy to come down and do presentations to educate folks about it as well. You would just have to let me know so I could get in touch with them and find a date that works for everybody.
Those are my questions. And I would like to, as a council member, see someone from Rumkey be active, come in and meeting with us so we can educate our residents and, you know, so we can be more transparent. So we're just not, hey, this is what we chose and this is what you got. The more that we can teach them and empower them to, you know, they're making better decisions for their children. And then maybe, maybe, you know, work with the Lincoln Elementary and, you know, have a recycling contest. And if the kids are recycling, the parents are more right, like some things like that.
Oh, yeah. We, we have, we do a lot of presentations at schools, especially elementary schools. Kids love it. They love it. So we have people that do that. So we can get something arranged for that.
I have a question. Um, I have a friend in Westerville that was talking about this. I know that for years and years I have composted. And it's kind of like when you get recycling, maybe you don't need it, but after a while you can't stand to throw a plastic thing in the garbage.
Sure.
And it's the same thing with composting. It seems like a sin to put a banana peel in the garbage after, after you do it all the time. But I know that a lot of people don't have any way of composting, whether they're, they don't have the land for it, they don't have the... Would, do you have something like that or would you ever consider doing that program? Because I know in other cities they have it, these little buckets and you can, and also you can go and pick up compost for your garden and all.
Right. We have, um, it's, it's in their minds. It's in the Rumkey minds. There's a lot of people that has asked for a compost option and it is something that they're always looking for ways to provide that. We're not there yet, but they're always looking for avenues to be able to provide that to residents, you know, so they can do that as well. We just, we just don't have it right now.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
So I, I share Terrace's enthusiasm for the PR around this, that we could have, um, outside of safety in the city, I feel like the residents care most out of the city for streets, making sure the streets are nice and they're just picked up on a regular basis, right? So I think this is important for our citizens. For those that get really excited about it, uh, is there anything, uh, you guys offer tours of your facility or anything like that? If people want to see how you're recycling or, um...
Absolutely. Yes.
We could have a Dayton Day at the Dump, something like that?
I don't know if you want to go to the land. But yes, we set up tours for folks to go and see our recycling facility all the time. So probably, it would probably be the one at Cincinnati. It's, it's a state-of-the-art facility that we have. It's the one that burnt like 13 years ago, if you guys remember. And we rebuilt it. But we also have a new one in Columbus that's something to see as well. So we do have folks on the recycling side that will set up tours for you all to go out there and see it. And they make you wear the headsets and... What this does, what that does, you know?
Nice. Thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe we could even have the Rumkey Mountain Boys come out and play for us?
Dude, I love those guys. Do you know the band?
No affiliation.
I do not know who they are.
You don't know the Rumkey Mountain Boys?
No.
They're a bluegrass band.
Okay. I will look it up.
Yeah, they're, they're fun.
I have no idea who they are. I haven't even met all of the Rumkeys.
Oh, they're a lot.
I know.
It's a big family.
And there's a bunch of them that are Rumkeys but don't have the Rumkey last name. So you...
How dare they?
Really have to be cautious.
Like incognito.
Yes. Yes.
I, I know one of the band members and when they were looking for the name of a band and they were asking someone from outside the state, they said, what's the tallest hill in your town?
Mount Rumkey.
And they said Rumkey Mountain. So that's how they decided on Rumkey Mountain.
Stanley's Pub.
It's something to see up there. Their corporate office is pretty amazing.
State of the art. For our kids walking around and for the workers, for the Rumkey employees to be able to use these totes instead of having to pick up garbage bag. I'll be interested. I wish we knew exactly what our percentage was of active recyclers in town and then track that. Now, one of the things you mentioned in your documentation was you would provide a quarterly accounting of how many tons of recycling were picked up from Dayton. I think that'd be kind of interesting to track that and make it more of a goal. Not to create more trash, but to recycle more trash.
Yeah, we can provide those on a quarterly basis.
Thank you.
And, you know, something that you have to keep in mind is, I mean, it, it may look, it, it's a jump from what you're currently paying right now. But, you know, this contract is 10 years old and this was pre-pandemic. And those prices were set not really knowing that a pandemic was going to take place.
It was a super cheap deal then anyway.
Huh?
Yeah, we all knew we got a smoking hot deal back then.
Yeah, it was a super cheap deal anyway and even a standard deal anyway.
Yeah, correct. But if you break it down, it's like, what, $5 a week per resident?
How much a day?
Five, seven, five, 71.
A day?
A week.
A week.
How much a day?
Dollar a day.
Less than an hour. Less than a dollar a day.
We're talking 10 cents an hour.
80 cents.
I would give up a Dunkin' drink one time a week for my trash and recycling to be gone.
What other kind of questions, comments do we have for, for Miss Robin from Rumkey? I appreciate your diligence in this bidding process.
No problem.
Your willingness to work with our city. And, uh, let's see what happens.
Thank you.
I had a motion to, uh, accept Order Resolution 2025-11 Romeo by Mr. Judd. And I had a second by Member Lovin', so we're going to go ahead and, uh, do a roll call, please. That's me since Tristan is on PTO. So, uh, Ms. Lovins?
Aye.
Mr. Judd?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Horton?
Aye.
Mr. Neary?
Aye.
Ms. Neiman?
Aye.
The ayes have it 100%.
I wanted to say no just for you.
We got the whole enchilada, the brie de sucre with the churros on the side. Good job. All right, uh, anybody from the audience like to address council about anything else that's on your mind? Want to talk about the Reds? I don't. All right, so we're going to go ahead and close that. Do we have any new business, uh, council?
Does new business also mean discussion or is that separate?
That'd be new business.
Okay, so the, I have something then. Um, so this Thursday, Housing Opportunities of Northern Kentucky will be having an open house on the property at 607th Avenue in, here in Dayton. It'll be the second ever home that they've refurbished here in the city and they're very excited to show it off to the residents. So I encourage all the residents and council and staff and everyone to, to attend that. The event starts at 4:00 PM this Thursday. At 5 o'clock, there will be a presentation that will include a couple of different speakers, I believe, the construction manager. They want me to say a few words since I'm the president of the board for them and I'm a resident here. But if anybody else wants to say anything as well, please just let me know and we can try and pencil in five minutes or so for, for someone. But if anybody else wants to say anything as well, please just let me know, and we can try and pencil in five minutes or so for, for someone, um, representing the city to, to speak as well.
And that's this Thursday?
This Thursday, yes.
Any address?
Six hundred Seventh Avenue.
At?
Four PM start, five o'clock is a presentation. It'll end at about six.
Love it. Thank you for your work on that, sir.
I get, I get that email.
Here.
Thank you. I would say I'm gonna take them.
Anybody else have new business? That means announcements as such. Any, uh, wanna make the motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Member Neiman's made the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, Member Horton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any absentions? Go forth and recycle.
Well done, guys.
Non beep.
Good job.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Well, enjoy that thing.
Those guys are gonna get replaced.